It's bizarre that it's so cold right now.
Mr. Chair, I have seven thirty-two.
Yeah.
We've called meeting to order.
Okay, we have our quorum. All right, good evening. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting. We have an agenda for November tenth, twenty twenty-five. So, seven thirty-two?
Thirty-three.
So, having called the meeting to order, can I get approval for this evening's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Proceeding with said agenda, I would take a motion to approve or amend the October thirteenth minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained. I wasn't present.
All right. Very good. The motion passes. Okay, then we will proceed with agenda item number four. We have appeals for Salem and Hendry. Hank, you want to let us know how best to proceed?
Yeah. First appeal is from Keith Mossman at two five eight four four Salem. At this point in time, we'd have some phone to come up. Can you grab a seat up there or stand? Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, Keith. Either stand or at the table there and just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Okay.
And you can present your case.
So, sorry, this is my first one. First time doing this.
That's all right. We're all neighbors.
So, yeah, I currently have a two-car garage with a garden shed next to it. It's a eight-by-twelve garden shed. I don't know the exact dimensions on the garage, but I would like to take both of those out, the two-car garage and the garden shed, and then build a three-car garage. Reason why is because I have a third car and I pay quite a bit of money for a storage unit for it. So, I'm hoping to save some of that money and actually put it into my property versus just wasting it, you know, every month on a storage bill. I did have a survey completed of the property. Currently today, I think I'm at fifty-one percent coverage. It was in the backyard, the rear property. And of course, it says we cannot exceed fifty percent, so that's what the appeal is for tonight. And with the three-car garage and then the concrete in front of it to access all three bays, it was going to put me at like sixty-two percent coverage for the rear property, which is what I'm asking the appeal for tonight. And the reason why, my lot is fifty feet wide at the front and forty feet wide at the back, so it kind of tapers back in a somewhat pizza shape, and it takes away some of that lot percentage, affects that lot percentage because of the way it angles back and reduces in the backside there. So, that's what I'm asking for overall. Do I need to go through any of the appeals part on four?
You, it's up to you. You can, there are the four criteria. If you want to touch it, you know, we'll have a chance to ask some questions and get some input from the city as well. So, this is not your final say on things either.
Oh, okay. If it might be better, and it might also be better if Keith wants to hear what goes on, if he comes back again after I've done the city part of the presentation, so he'll understand the four criteria, he'll understand what the city's typical position is on it, and then he can address that again. So, he'll get every option he can do, and then, of course, he would take public comment.
Okay. That sound good? So, we'll let Hank usually, he takes us through maybe some visuals, and you'll get a chance to say more about.
Okay. Sounds good.
So, Mr. Chair, at this point in time, what you have before you is a matter of appeal from Keith Mossman at two five eight four four Salem. We're here to take public comment and hear his position for the following variances. Section forty-six point oh-three, accessory building structures and uses. B, accessory buildings in residential zone districts. The total ground area covered by all accessory building and structures together should not occupy more than fifty percent of the rear yard. The appeal is to have a three-car garage and driveway plus existing structures that cover sixty-two point six-eight of the rear yard, which is a higher percentage than is allowed. So, your twelve point six-eight over the rear yard allowance, the rear yard allowable coverage is what he's asking for for this lot. The key issues will be the impervious surface and the stormwater management of adding a substantial garage. With the, as it tapers towards the back, you have less area for the runoff to take care of as it goes to neighboring properties. So, that's one of the things that is going to be important. You've seen this one here. You can see that one on the left is his garage and his shed that he was talking about that sits there as it lives right now with a stone patio in that. The second one shows the proposed garage, which covers substantially more area and also has the proposed driveway substantially more. They do lose the stone patio and that little walkway, and the deck stays relatively the same. You see the dimensions are still the same on it with the same edge. There's no change for that at all. And then the house is what it is right there. So, you can see that what he's asking for is sixty-two percent of the rear yard coverage. So, that's just one of the things you want to consider when you're going through this. So, the criteria for this, whoops, should be considered in determining whether variance is the best solution. One is unique or unique, special or unique conditions and circumstances that exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved, which are not generally applicable to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. So, the lot is of an irregular configuration, yet it still encompasses seven thousand one hundred and seventeen square feet and a total lot coverage of twenty-six point five as it sits right now. That's the whole lot coverage, with most of it unfortunately being already in the rear yard. So, the rear yard has a heavy density already. The coverage right now is fifty-five point three-three before the ask, which means this is already existing nonconforming as fifty percent is the maximum. So, if one was to approximate the rear yard, here's a question that typically comes up with this. If it was not irregular and it was a straight rectangle, you'd have seventy-nine hundred square feet instead of seventy-one seventeen of that. So, it's seventy-seven feet from the rear yard there, straight back times fifty is thirty-eight seventy-five. It would have been two thousand sixty-three minus, minus the two thousand sixty-three leaves you with eighteen hundred square feet, which you don't have because it's not straight. It's not regular. So, it is irregular, and it would be under fifty percent, and we wouldn't be here right now. But it is. So, the other thing is the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. I do have a letter of support for the, I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong way with this. One neighbor has a letter of support for the variance. Our question to the city is the additional square foot coverage is a very limited space to contain stormwater, and that needs to be consideration because if you look at the back of the lot with what's being proposed, it's mostly garage. So, where's that water going to go? Downspouts that drain from the roof are not shown, although they will have to be shown at a time when building permits are submitted. Now is also a good time for you to talk about that because, while it's not necessarily your province, it's a concern when granting the variance that it may create a detrimental situation for others. Three, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The appellant wants a three-car garage, which will not fit according to the standards. Three-car garages are allowed provided the lot and configuration will meet the zoning code. Not all lots do. Not all lots will do this. The appellant must satisfy you that this is a need and not a self-created hardship. That's what standard number three is. It's typically the self-created hardship. So, that's one of the things that you have to take a look at. Four, a literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under terms of this ordinance and that the variance is the minimum necessary. Three-car garage is permitted that the lot will accommodate it. Not all lots do or can. The ordinance is intended to provide for drainage, and that's with thirty percent lot coverage as well as a fifty percent rear yard lot coverage. It's to help preserve green space as well as provide a reasonable rate of pervious to impervious surface. Not all lots in the same district will accommodate a three-car garage. One of the considerations is two is that are there more lots that are irregular shaped? And the answer is there's a lot of lots that are irregular shaped. Minimum lot area to be used or set aside or accessory buildings. I put this in because right now he doesn't have it. So, for this lot equals four hundred and eighty square feet, four hundred and forty-two square feet is what is currently there, plus a hundred square feet of existing shed. The existing coverage is already over even without the total four eighty. So, meaning he's over right now. Nothing happens. He's already over this lot coverage. That's not what you're really here to decide. What you're here to decide is if this garage is going to give him substantial relief or whatever you want, however you decide on it, so that you can determine whether or not it meets the criteria for a variance, for a dimensional variance, because that's what he's asking for. So, the only other thing that we have regarding this is, is that you've seen the submissions for the surveys. You've all have gotten the surveys for this. You've all seen what we've talked about for this. So, there are questions that you might ask and, you know, get on the record as far as how he plans to manage the stormwater from that. And other than that, that's really all we have. This one is, okay. I would have nothing that would be definitive either way, but you certainly are free to ask, Mr. Mossman, anything else?
Sure. Mr. Ross, you can come. You don't need to come to the podium. You can sit in that way. We'll have you on the mic. All right. So, we can open, if there's anything you wanted to add? No, again, well, this would be pretty fluid.
Yeah.
We can also open up to questions that might give you some clues about concerns that the board members have.
Sure. The only thing else I'll add is we did look at proposing moving that garage forward to give more green space behind the garage to try to meet the fifty percent. But if I remember right, it put the garage at like twelve feet off the deck, which was not enough room for the concrete and to access the front of the garage. So, then we pushed it back, and then that's why we came for the variance. The only other thing is that stone patio was put in in twenty twenty, and I remember at the time it was permitted. But I remember at the time they dug out like six feet worth of dirt, and it's all sand, and it's a permeable surface today, which helps with drainage of that property for that water to go somewhere. And then, of course, if I did get the variance approved, I would have, of course, had a topo survey done so we could figure out the stormwater and the best way to manage that to not impact the neighbors. But, yeah.
Okay. Well, we can open it up to?
Want to just go in horseshoe?
Just any, you want to start? We can just sort of go for it.
I'll just ask a couple of questions then. Hank, could you please give us an education on the impervious surface issue in terms of what happens if less than fifty percent or less than a certain percentage is covered?
Okay, so, here's what the original fifty percent of the rear yard and thirty percent of the lot coverage were designed to help manage stormwater runoff and preserve green space. That was the original intent of it. So, when lots have a higher percentage of that, there's less water that goes into the ground and more water that goes either onto the neighboring properties or into the city sewers during a rain. So, this was an opportunity for us to have some areas like this one in particular, which has a sandy soil, would drain better than some lots that would be in the middle section, which would be blue play lots. So, that's where the fifty percent came in. At fifty percent, you had a fifty percent chance of the water being absorbed by the property and then maybe more depending on how the grading or drainage or anything else was proposed. So, that was that. Thirty percent of the lot coverage was so that you didn't load up fifty percent of the whole thing because the water in the property couldn't handle that.
So, just in lay terms, what you're saying is because of the excess coverage beyond fifty percent in the backyard, that increases the likelihood that a rainstorm will result in water running off?
Absolutely.
Into other people's properties?
Absolutely.
What's the way, if there is a way, to mitigate that?
Drainage and grading and making sure that there, if they have an underground system, it's like the gentleman was saying, Mr. Mossman, stone patio, and that takes care of a lot of the water, yet it's not shown on the new plan.
And also, I would assume that if we were to say that you can get around the rule by having additional draining or, you know, what are they called, the things that come down from the east?
Downspouts.
Downspouts.
Yeah.
That anyone could basically say, I'm going to mitigate my being over by having additional downspouts.
It would depend on, A, where the downspouts go to. If they go to an underground drainage system or storage system, then the answer would be, yeah, that would work. But if they were going to go over land with downspouts and/or directing towards neighbors' properties, then that would put the neighbors' properties at risk.
And so, the downspouts or the additional drainage are not in the plan that's being presented?
That is correct.
And so, we don't have a real good way of assessing whether or not the additional lot coverage will or will not adversely impact the neighbors?
You have a conceptual idea based on the fact that if there's more impervious surface, you're more likely to have a problem, and the roof would be considered impervious surface.
So, sir, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate you participating in this, obviously. Let's focus on the question of need. Why do you need this?
Because I currently spend close to four hundred dollars a month on a storage unit to park my car in, that I'm wanting to reinvest that back into the property.
Is there any other reason as to why you need this particular garage, for three-car garage?
No, just to park all three of the cars that we have inside the garage.
I'll just say that over the years, we've been presented on this and on other panels that I've sat on with similar situations where the person, you know, has a preference and wants to get around the ordinance because of that preference, and there's a choice to have a third car, there's a choice to, you know, assume that liability, the extra money that's associated with the third car. And in my mind, just being totally candid, and I respect what you're doing, I don't know that that's a need. And I am personally concerned about, particularly without any demonstration, that the drainage issue has not been addressed for your neighbors, that this is not the right thing for me to vote in favor of. And the final thing I'll say, just so you know where I'm coming from, if in fact my opinion doesn't change after this discussion, is I'm very concerned about precedent. I'm very concerned about what impact a decision here could have to encourage other people to do things that run afoul of the ordinance?
Yeah.
That were clearly drafted for a reason. I'm worried that, given that there are so many lots that are, you know, not regularly shaped, that this could create that precedent that would cause other people to come here when there's not a need also. So, I'm inclined not to vote for it right now.
Yeah. And I totally understand that. The drainage would, in my mind, be mitigated to not impact the neighbors. We could come up with a plan for that. Like I was saying, that underneath the stone patio is all sand today, and I currently have irrigation pipes that go on the ground off the current downspouts to take that water away, because if not, it just ends up back in my garage.
And just, I'm done, but just the three things that I'm thinking about for others to consider maybe, there's no showing that that, that the drainage is not going to adversely impact people. I'm not hearing the need and a word about precedent.
Yeah, that's fair. Can I counter? Well, I'll hold that to the end. But, yeah, and at the end of the day, we're talking ten percent addition, additional coverage, right? Fifty-two versus sixty-two.
In my mind, the problem is that we don't here have any showing that that additional ten percent isn't going to be harmful, and we don't have any, and the presumption is that it will be because the regulation, the ordinances are what they are, fifty percent, presumably for irrational reasons.
Yeah.
So, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, my concern is basically what Andy brought up. With all the concerns we've had in Huntington Woods with water and flooding in backyards and whatnot, and seeing how we don't have a mitigation plan to how we're going to handle that, the water runoff, I'm really concerned about going forward with this approval. That's kind of worrying.
Yeah, we can go. Can just go around?
Yeah, okay. Hank got a question for you.
Yeah.
And I don't doubt that it's accurate. I'm just curious if the purpose of handling stormwater and, you know, the reason for the impervious surface and the lot coverage items, are they specifically identified in the ordinance as being for the reason of limiting stormwater runoff? Or is that quite possibly a valid assumption based upon your experience and?
That was part of the drafting of the ordinance because by virtue of those numbers, if you have X, Y should happen. So, if you have this, it was set up so that these would help mitigate any storms or any water runoff that we had. Nothing has accounted for the rains we've had in the last few years. Yeah. But that's what the intent was of that.
Okay. I'm just curious if it's recited in the ordinance or that's background?
That's drainage and grading. So, there's ordinances enmeshed in order to have that happen.
Got it. He's already over. Is there any circumstances under which he would be asked to remove structure?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. What's there is there.
What's there is there. He's entitled to it. It's there. The city's not going to make him take anything.
All right. All right. You know, I agree largely with Andy. I mean, the ordinance says what the ordinance says, and I don't think there's, this is a circumstances, circumstance where you're being denied the reasonable opportunity to use your property in a way, okay, that the need, if you want to call it a need, is particular to your circumstance of how many cars you own. I don't know if there's other solutions because it sounds like this is a car that is not part of your daily use.
No, it's one I restored.
Yeah, exactly. And there may be other solutions that may be available. I don't know what the configuration of your garage in terms of putting it on a lift somewhere, but that's gratuitous.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works. But my feeling is that you're not prevented from using your property in a way that any other resident would be able to use their property that didn't have the extraordinary circumstance that you do. The only criteria that I see being met here is the first one having to do with an irregular lot shape. The other four criteria, I don't know that there's an impact on the neighborhood at all. But as I read the, as I read the burdens here, it's up to the applicant to show us that they meet all those criterias. It's not our job to go looking for them.
Yeah.
And I just don't think, I just don't think you've met the burden that you're obliged to meet under the ordinance, and I don't think I could support the grant of the variance.
Is that due to the drainage?
It's because that's what the statute says, the ordinance says, and I'm not going to parse the reasons why they did that. I'm not going to second guess the city commission as to why they pick a number or don't pick a number, especially if there's not other compelling circumstances that make this somehow worthy of granting an exception that runs with the land. It's not just for you.
Yeah.
It's for everybody there. Okay? So, that's where I sit on this.
Other thoughts or questions? We also need to take public comment. But let's make it around first.
My only thought was, have you considered other alternatives? Like, my neighbor has a lift for his third car that's a really old Stingeri core.
Yeah. With the sixteen-foot, I don't know if I'd be able, well, the current garage, I wouldn't be able to do that because it's only like ten foot tall anyway, and then the garage, the roof is not much taller than that, so I wouldn't be able to do that anyway, inside the current structure anyway.
And what if he changed the structure? Then would he be back here because it's over?
Depending on what the modifications were, if he needed height modifications, depending on what he wanted to do, if you wanted to take the walls to twelve feet, so you could put a lift in and lower the pitch of the roof, you might be able to do that. But without drawing the son of a gun, I wouldn't be able to comment as to whether or not that's possible. I know that other people in here, the significant amount of other people in here have used lifts for alternative, for extra vehicles.
Well, my thought, though, if he leaves the garage as is, he's fine that it's over because it's grandfathered. But anything he does to modify the garage, if it's old and it's leaking or whatever, he's going to have to come back.
Well, it's not if it's leaking. He's allowed to repair the existing structure.
Repair or like?
Repair. If you wanted to replace it, when you have, it's a nonconforming structure, and the thought process behind nonconforming structures is eventually the nonconformity will go away.
Will come down, and then it will conform with our order.
And then it will conform to the ordinance.
I see.
The issue that he's got with that is, is that the size garage that he has now is less than what the set aside is for that zone district. So, in other words, he has like, you go to zoning district, you go to, you were going to build, let's just say you were building all this from scratch. He'd have to have a four hundred and eighty-square-foot garage allocated for on the site.
Whether or not he built it.
Whether or not he built it, he would still have to have it. So, assuming that that would be the case, the house would be smaller. That would be the only other alternative. The house is what it is. The garage is what it is. But you're actually looking at this, and he's already over with that. But his new garage, if it was granted, would be, I'm sorry, Keith, what was it, five hundred and thirty-eight square feet or something like that?
The new one would be, the max I was allowed was six fifty. It was just below that.
Six forty-eight. So, that would be what he would have, which would usurp the four hundred and eighty square feet, and that wouldn't be an issue. Right now, nothing he has on the site is an issue because it's legal nonconforming.
Right. Thank you.
I don't have anything additional. I mean, not going to parse anymore. I mean, I'm pretty much on the same page, so I don't have anything else.
Hank, has this plan gone through planning for setbacks?
It would not go through planning. It would be reviewed by staff. It meets the criteria for what it has to have.
Okay.
Except for that it needs the variance in order to have them.
I have one more question. Say it appears today that it's unlikely that this would, that this appeal will be granted based on what I'm hearing. Could one come back and try again, or is this the kind of thing where one removes their?
There would have to be some material information that was not available at this meeting. So, in other words, if he came back with a drainage and grading plan, if he came back with some, maybe perhaps some elevations on a proposed garage that shows where, how the downspouts might be directed, that would be considered likely, would be considered material that would not have been available at this meeting for you to make a decision. Therefore, with something like that, he could come back to the zoning board of appeals and ask for his overage based on the fact that he has mitigated his, he has mitigated the stormwater drainage, and it's documented at that point in time, not conceptual. So, if you have a sealed letter or a sealed plan from an engineer stating that he's managed all the stormwater on site, then that would, then that would take that issue, and it might, and I'm not saying will, because it's still the decision that has to be voted on by you, it might influence your decision somewhat.
So, do you think it would be best to have the vote and then make those additional things and come back and ask, or is it best to remove the request for an appeal and bring that in some other time? Just curious.
Well, here's the thing. This is noticed for tonight.
Okay.
So, if you don't, if you act on it tonight, that ends it. If you table it, it would be to the next meeting. I don't recommend.
Oh, I don't mean us tabling it.
Yeah, I don't recommend it. Well, he can't table it. It has to be an action from you. I would suggest that you, if you're not, if you're disinclined to honor the request at this point in time, that you vote it down, and then he comes back with a fresh set of plans and a set of circumstances. plans and a set of circumstances. And the issue because is, it's not just the review time that we have to have and everything like that, but if he comes back with a drainage, a drainage plan for this, we may well want a time to send that out to Noahak and Fraus, and, you know, for our city engineers to take a look at that, and, you know, put their hand to it as well. And if that's the case, by the time we did that, got that back, we wouldn't have it, because if I get the plan from him in two weeks, I get it, Noahak and Fraus, I'm not getting it for the next meeting. So that's, if you're disinclined, I would suggest to you that that's probably your best way to go.
Okay, well, maybe, Andy, maybe we should pause now to open the floor to public comment, I just wanted to say.
Yeah, or he still can redirect it.
Yeah, of course.
Just so it's clear, and never say never, the mere fact that there is a plan to mitigate potential flooding or drainage issues probably wouldn't move me to vote for it because of the lack of what I see as need and my concern about precedent. I just want to be candid about that, so no one's laboring on any falsehoods.
Yeah, it doesn't change us.
Yeah, I mean, having a kid who's about to be 16, I'm wondering where her car is going to go, I completely understand, because there's definitely not room for it.
You can do the shuffle.
I don't know what I'm going to do, actually.
Sorry, I just wanted to ensure that was out there.
All right, well, before we entertain a motion, let's open the floor to public comment, if anyone here wants to weigh in on this appeal.
Hello, I'm Stephen Condon, and I live at 12727 LaSalle, and I would like to call for a moratorium on all 50% coverage increases until the city gets a better grip on stormwater management. And I pass out a handout to all of you. It is the three action topics on the master plan that relate to stormwater, and also all the codes that I could find related to stormwater. And if you see number 48, it's been a high priority item for the planning commission, and you'll see they still need to figure out, other requirements could include requiring residential properties that add over a certain threshold of square footage. So that certain threshold of square footage hasn't been determined. Cities like Ann Arbor, it's 200 square feet, and you have to prove where it's going. So we really need to do a lot in terms of planning, the master plan, permitting and sign-off, because I'm finding lots of examples where something gets permitted and then residents are moving their downspouts, or the as-built survey gets missed. The other thing is, a lot of times driveways aren't taken into account, so we don't know, right, I drove by the house, it looks like the high point of the driveway is right where the original colonial meets the extension. So there's a lot of houses that are trying to, I've talked to driveway contractors, they're trying to dump from the back of the property with the driveway all the way to the street. So until we get a sense of how much pressure we're going to put on the system, and then your duties and powers say the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located, and will not endanger the public safety or reasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area, and blah, 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 some more. So I'm glad that Hank is bringing up the water issues with this house, you know, every house has pluses and minuses, you know, corner lots have issues, high sheeps have issues. I didn't hear whether it was a work vehicle or like a special vehicle for disability, so I didn't hear the need, they already broke it. And again, I'm not even sure why this made it here without some indication of the grade readings at the lot lines, where's the downspouts on the house or the garage, what kind of roof is the garage going to have, is it going to be tipped, is it going to be gabled, is it, I think the current garage shoots toward the back as it is, I don't know. So maybe there's already a neighbor getting water, and also, again, we don't, we have no idea where that garage apron is going. So I encourage you to vote no on this until we get stormwater under control, and I also encourage you to read through this and look at these, one's a high priority item, one's medium, and one hasn't been included. And I really think we should encourage the city to include number 12, which is to launch an education awareness campaign about personal management, and included in that could be, you know, don't pour concrete without a permit, because there's a lot of concrete being poured, a lot of impervious surface being installed, and a lot of driveways with, when the driveway permit comes in, nothing's being written about which ways it tipped, is the high point, is some of it going to go to the back, and we're going to encourage them to manage it. And then the last thing I'll say, like, here's a good, a house is a good example where, once you extend a house, then the 50% you have to maintain is even less than when you put an addition on. So just when you need to displace more, manage more displaced water, the required, the 50% is shrunk, does that make sense? So please, I'm encouraging a moratorium on all of this until the city gets stormwater management under control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, the zoning board of appeals can't enact a moratorium.
Yes, it is not in front of us today, but we appreciate your advocacy. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hellstand, 13108 Tumbet Avenue. I appreciate the thoughtful discussion going on here tonight, and I'm encouraged by it. I agree, the issue of precedent, I think, is really compelling here. And given the seriousness of stormwater management in this city, I think we really need to be very, very careful about making easy decisions to let people increase their non-fourth surface area, it's a serious issue for the whole city. Appreciate your careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Gail, Linden, 25840 Concord. I'm here tonight because I was in the notice area, but I would have looked at the plans anyway. I live just one block behind you in the exact same location that you're in. My lot narrows also not as extremely as your lot narrows, but it does get narrower. You're quite lucky in that you've got a 158-foot lot in depth, whereas the majority of the lots in the front of the woods, in the wood section, are 50 by 150. So you've got depth, but you've got, you know, extra eight feet going backwards, your house in your front yard are 82 feet, and so that leaves you 76 feet from the corner of your house to the back. Some of us get around, I have a classic car in my garage, and that means I park a car out in the winter. Or you put a lift up. I don't see the need to have to go and put the water off on another location, whether it's the side neighbor or behind you on Concord or whatever else. There's already enough talk in the community about, you know, neighbors and their runoff and where their water is going, and I don't see that the lot is that unusual that it should do it. You're already over, and nobody would make you have to give up your garden shed or your deck or your patio. Those could stay at this particular point, and you'd be over the 50%. And so that's what I'm here to have brought to your attention and the committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing, no further comment, we'll close public comment, and...
You might want to give Mr. Bossman.
Certainly, Mr. Bossman, if there's anything you wanted to add or inquire.
No, I totally understand everybody's concerns, and please know that my intention was not to flood my neighbors out, nor would I ever want to do that, so that's not what I was wanting to do here. Obviously, you're right, like, it's, yeah, I could easily park a car in the driveway, I would just prefer to park all three in the garage, right? So trying to follow the process, so I appreciate all your time tonight, everybody's time.
And we appreciate your follow-up process.
Yeah, and that's, in regards to precedent, like, that's the thing that bothers me. I think when I look around the neighborhood, there's nothing we can do about it now, but I know there's others that have complete, almost 100% coverage in their backyard, right? I can look at my neighbors and see that. So it's, it's just hard on the precedent part of it, but I totally get where you're coming from, because if you continue to do it, then it just gets worse, and to the point with the stormwater, like, I don't want my basement flooded, so like, I would rather park a car outside, right? So I totally get it, I totally get it. But it's just, that's the only thing that hurts me a little bit, but you can't fix the past, nor do I want to get anybody else in trouble with what they have, it's already built, like, why ask them to change, right? So it is what it is at this point.
Thank you.
But I do appreciate all your comments and your time, for sure.
All right, so unless there, well, we can, we can have further discussion, but maybe now someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, move to deny the variance applications as they fail to meet the necessary standards for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. Any further, further comment? I'll just say, yeah, thank you again for coming, certainly, this is why we're here. We appreciate that people want to do things above board and be creative with how they use their ever narrowing backyards. The, I will just say that the precedent is, is a sort of a conceptual consideration, because each of these is, is a unique consideration and does not directly determine what a neighbor or someone else in the, in the city could do, but we certainly understand wanting to be fair and consistent. So unless there's any other comment, we can take a vote on the motion as presented. All in favor of the motion to deny the variance?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, so the motion passes, thank you again for coming.
Yep, thank you.
All right, that brings us to our second appeal of the evening for 8165 Hendry.
Yeah, if you could, you can sit down right by the microphone if you'd like.
Good evening.
I'm Todd Johnson, nice to meet you, yes.
All right, so Todd, if you want to just give us an initial primer, you know, we have some materials here, and then we can go through the, go through the discussion.
Yeah, we're just here, like I said, to get, like I said, the approval of a place where we put a generator at, because there's been a lot of confusion between Hank and my office, and me and Hank back and forth on here, about what's the front of a house and what's the side of a house, and then we put it on the side of a house, according to us, but we're being told that's considered the front of the house. So we installed it thinking that was the side of the house, and we're looking to get approval to put it where we put it at, is where we're at. And I have drawings of the house, and it's confusing to us. It may not be everybody else on here, but it's confusing to us, that's kind of where we're at. And we already installed it thinking it was a no-brainer, and it's turning out to be not so much. And I have like drawings of what we have, if you guys want to see it, you can, or if that works.
Yeah, do you have, do you have multiple, eight copies?
I got a bunch in my office, but I got them brought for me.
I think this is, I think it's probably some, the same thing that we already have in here, so, okay, thank you for...
Just to make sure, run, okay.
So let's, let's turn it over to Hank to give us some context here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, what you have is a request here to put an air conditioner in the front yard. Whether they understand it or not, they were told several times that where they were planning on putting it was the front yard. The front of this lot is planted off of Wareham, even though the front house faces Hendry. Having said that, they were told not to put the generator there until they had permission from the zoning board of appeals, because it was a front yard, they went ahead and put it there anyway. So then that gets us here. So here's the lot, right? So if you take a look at this, this is the fronting on Hendry here. Is this not working, or is it just, it loses its direction?
Oh, yeah, you can't do it in there.
So the side street, which is to the right where the big trees are, that's Wareham. The curb street in front of the house where the driveway is, is Hendry. So as a result, what you're seeing is, the front of the house faces Hendry, so where they put it was on the Wareham side. So even with the way that this is situated, they couldn't have put it on the Hendry side, even though that's a side yard, because you can't get within five feet of an openable window. Same for the rear yard. So, and then for the practical rear yard of the house, there's really no space, because it's right between them and the lot line. So having said that, had they come here, there is a fair likelihood that they would have been granted permission to do this. The knock on that is, is that they chose to circumvent the ordinance even after they were told not to, and go ahead and put it in anyway. So having said that, we're here before that, and I'm not saying that their location is not the right way or a good place to do it, because you can see all the trees and foliage, it's also going to be less likely to be visible from that side anyway. So having said that, the issue really is, A, that they didn't put it in, B, we have no permit, C, we have no inspections on this at all, and D, it's already put in, installed and running, without a gas pressure test or any of those things. So, and these are licensed contractors, they know that, and that's part of the issue that we have with this. Having said that, I can take care of that and on the permitting process, because there is a fee escalation for doing that. However, once you have that issue set, I'm not convinced that this isn't likely the best place for the generator to go, because it makes the most sense and complies with code. So at that point, I can go to this right here and just go to the solutions. "Special or unique conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or the building involved, and which are not generally applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district." The lot is planted off of Wareham, even though the front faces Hendry. That leaves the Wareham side as the technical front yard. There are a few of these situations in the woods, some come for generators, some come for other reasons. But this situation either leaves him with a generator in his practical front yard on Hendry, or is it his actual front yard on Hendry, or on the Wareham side screened. The other concern was that the electrician installed this again without a permit after being told not to. While this doesn't impact the decision, it does impact the permitting process, which will be dealt with in-house should the location be approved. Two, the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. To date, we've had one negative communication and one call also negative. I do believe that there could be a misunderstanding in what the front yard actually is from the neighbors, because one said that they didn't want to look at it from a vantage point of that house. They wouldn't necessarily be able to see where it's been installed, but they would see that it was in the front of the house on Hendry. Three, the special conditions and circumstance do not result from the actions of the applicant. The appellant has owned the house for quite a while, however, the configuration of the house on the lot, and the architectural and window, or any potential opening that could be adversely affected by the exhaust, was designed and built long before the silver's ownership. And back in those days, you didn't even have generators, or whole house generators. Additionally, the location as proposed itself may actually be the least invasive or noticeable, save the back corner of the house bordering 8175 Hendry. Four, a literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance, and that the variance is the minimum necessary. Again, we just recommended that the proponent explanation be obtained at the meeting. The way the house is situated doesn't leave them a lot of choices. Their need for a generator, weather being what it is in Michigan, would typically be considered reasonable and prudent. The situation of the residents on the lot with the design in the windows includes reasonable placement, applying to the code. Just so that you know, that one of these cannot be placed within five feet of a window or doorway, openable or not, or an intake, or basement windows that open. So those are some considerations that they have. So a lot of times when you're doing a house like this, you really don't have a lot of choices as to where you can put this. So again, that's more what you have to decide on, the fact that it was done without a permit would be dealt with in-house, City Hall.
Okay, thank you. So let's, let's start on this side, and I just, I think it's worth, bears repeating that, like, how the, how we got to this point in terms of the permitting missteps isn't our jurisdiction, and we should just consider the... and we should just consider this based on the spatial variance that they're here requesting and not, you know, the demerits or otherwise.
The only thing, it doesn't, there is no demerits system. You're right, there is no demerits system for this, but it's part of how it got here, and that's why.
It is, and, you know, we are here to consider things holistically, but I think it's a spatial variance, and then that's, we should look at it, you know, from a bird's eye view for that purpose.
See, and we're kind of fine with like the permit things on here because saying that there was one phone call or two on here, this was discussions that went on like for a long time between can we do it, can we not do it, where can we put it and not can put it? And I have the signed, you know, paper here from Mr. Silver talking about this is like what we discussed where we could put it and not, where they initially wanted it, can't go at the front of the house. And all the confusion came bound to like what we would call the front of the house and what he has explained excellent to me many a times. What we call the side of the house is where all it came about on here. Where it's at meets every code known to man. There is no windows in the whole side of the house. There's no doors, there's no nothing on here. So the location is perfect. It's just all the miscommunication about what's the front of the house and what's the side of the house is what has caused every bit of this. And we couldn't pull permits because nobody could agree on the front of the house or the side of the house. That's why all that has been put on hold, and we're ready to do that anytime and pay whatever fines we have to do by doing the work ahead of time. But we have a customer that was calling us constantly, and matter of fact, Mr. Silver was using him against us and saying, you know, I know Hank, right? And we're going like, we get it. You've told us 101 times now. You guys play golf together. We get it. We're trying to figure out how to make this work. We get it and trying to work through this. So we're fine with that. We just want this to be signed off on. It's a perfect spot. We all agree on that and just be done. I mean, that's all that we're wanting.
Okay, I wasn't going to interrupt you, but I would say less is more in terms of any further comment about the, how we got to here now because we're, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't help the cause. So let's, we're want to, we know the, which direction the house faces and which way it was platted 100 and something years ago. Gal could tell us probably specifically when, but later. What's that? Okay, 100 years, there you go. So happy birthday to the...
Oh, yeah.
And...
Would it have been possible for it to go in the area labeled backyard, garden area? Are there windows and doors that prevent that?
You, right? Is it to me or?
To guess.
Whoever can answer.
It's impossible to do it. You can't even wheel the cart to get your thing back in. Oh, I thought he said me. I thought he said me. He said either one. So, sorry about that.
So if it's, if that question's going to me, there's a bunch of other places that it could be put. Is it as practical? Is it as reasonable? Probably not. And the reason is, is because if you take a look at the lot, and again, the enforcement issue is a separate issue. So but if you take a look at where he put it on the house, there is, the gas meter's on that side of the house. So realistically, the run for the gas and the pressure test from that would be a lot easier if done on that side. So I have no doubt, I know why they wanted to put it there. The process was just circumvented as far as that goes. And for the record, I've never played golf before.
Okay. The record will reflect the lack of golf.
Lack of golf.
The absence of, the absence of golf. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hank, would you say that this is the most reasonable place to put the generator?
I will...
Or one of the most reasonable?
I will say that it is one of the few places on that property that you can put it, and the proximity, the lack of proximity to windows and openings and perforations into the house certainly lends itself to that. I will tell you that the process, should it go forward from here and should they be favored with granting the variance, what will happen is is they will be issued a permit. They will still have to go through their inspection. There will be three inspections. There will be an electrical inspection because it will go to the transfer slip and then into the box, so that'll have to be taken care of. There will also be a gas permit, so there will be a mechanical permit for that. So that's going to have to take, and they're also going to have to have a gas pressure test to make sure that the pipe holds pressure. So that's a GPT that'll happen before it's connected to the unit, and then it'll be inspected for that. Then there's also a building permit. Why is the building permit required? Because that approves the location on the site. So whatever you decide here, if you decide this location is acceptable, then that's what Duane will be looking for when he goes out to make his inspection, that this is in the location as proposed and approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals because without your approval, he would not approve it there. He would not issue the permit.
We don't have to make the motion conditional and all that stuff. That's just something that's...
That's process.
Right. We're not, no, we're no...
I hate doing that.
You're approving the location, not approving the...
No scientific variances or technical, only spatial.
I guess that's really my only, because we've had the issues with the plating of land before, so it's not new. And we had one last meeting before, so, yeah, I don't have any other questions.
I got nothing.
Do you know, Hank, the letter here, and maybe this is what you were alluding to? Yeah, is, is, when she's talking about being, is she opposed to where it actually ended up being or where she thinks it? I don't know what, she didn't put her address here.
From her vantage point, she would be opposed to where it is now.
Is she on Hendry or Wareham?
Wareham.
Okay, sorry, Ben.
No, that's, no, that's all.
That was how I determined the same.
Wait, Mary Tennant, but Booth Platt, who's the one who says I don't want to see it in my front yard, they're on Hendry.
They're on Hendry, so they would be looking at the front of Hendry.
Yeah.
So they're not the ones actually seeing, correct?
I believe, and I can't speak for them, but I believe that that's a misunderstanding.
That's what I thought for that one. And Mary Tennant doesn't say she doesn't want to see it. She's just mad she never got to see anything in her front yard.
I do think that.
No, nor can I. That was just been here for a long time.
Maybe we can. I hope not.
1973.
Yeah, if she's here today, she can expound on it, but I...
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I don't...
Okay, I...
She lives down Wareham.
Right.
She's Wareham. Gotcha.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't have any, anything to add. We can make it around the horseshoe here?
Sure. I struggle with this one because I read the standards and I don't think it meets the standards. On the other hand, I think it may be the only practical solution as most convenient, you know, and notwithstanding Hank repeatedly saying that it's, the fact that it's in already and they've ignored it doesn't really make any difference, you know, and notwithstanding that I read his resentment in there. It's okay. It's okay, Hank. Well, it's all right. You have plenty of room to aggravate these people later. And I'm assuming competent installation, that the inspections and that sort of stuff are stuff that the installer has been through before and knows that they're coming and will comply in terms of the, in terms of the building codes as far as installation and pressure testing and all the rest of that stuff.
Once a permit is issued, they'll go through everything that they've probably been through 100 times.
Okay, yeah.
That's not done right now.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I have no reason from anything I have in front of me to suggest that there's shoddy work being done or anything like that. Okay? And as far as the objections, I think that at least the one, the shorter thing from Booth Platt reflects a misunderstanding of what the front of the house for the ordinance is as opposed to what appears to be where the front door is on the house because he's across the street and he doesn't want it in the front yard. That's what I'm reading his, you know, that's what I read his.
And again, just as, and you've been on the CBA long enough to understand this too, is that while comments from the neighbors are good, that's why you send out the notices. They're not supposed to bear entire weight on whether or not this is approved.
Okay, when it comes to weighing the other letter, you know, I understand, I mean, it could have been a paragraph. It didn't have to be all the rest of the stuff. But I don't regard one complaint as necessarily suggesting that there's harm being done to the neighborhood. That's, that's my two cents. Again, I, you know, I can talk about the, I think, criteria one about the special or unique conditions, you know, the front door is where the front door is, and I get that. And I don't know who put it there, and I don't know what their reason for was, and I don't really care. But that would explain the limitations on both the visibility to the, to the other neighbors across Hendry and the practicality of where to actually locate this thing. Injurious to the neighborhood, I think I've addressed. Special conditions that do not result from the action of the applicant. Well, I think we're back to where the front door is. I don't think they built the house. And as far as the actual installation of the thing, well, okay, we've beaten that horse to death. Would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. In your comments that you say indicating that just because some people can do it doesn't mean that everybody has to be able to do it. You know, I'm kind of wishy-washy on that, on that standard. So overall, I'm sympathetic, but I'm waiting to hear the comments from the other members of the panel before I come down with a final answer. As a practical matter, I think this is a very good solution, but I don't want to be in a position of ignoring the ordinance. I'm not worried in this particular circumstance about setting precedent. I've been on these boards long enough and read other minutes about the last thing we like is have somebody come in with a bunch of pictures and it's like that damn fire pit in the front yard or whatever it was that was approved. Okay? What were you thinking, guys? What were you thinking, guys?
It was an interpretation of the, anyway, that's not...
Okay, anyway.
Not a problem.
You know, I'm not worried, the last thing we want is people walking in here with pictures saying, how come you let this go and how come you let that go? I don't think we're in danger of that in this particular circumstance. So I'm tending to be sympathetic but struggling to fit it within the standards. That's where I am.
Anything, Dan?
The only thing I want to say is we've talked about this before in many cases where the house actually, the front house physically faces Hendry, but it's platted off the other way. And I think it's probably the most practical place to put this that they have on the site. Again, reading the letters and taking a look at the picture there, I just don't see where it's a real big issue for the, for the neighbors.
Just, it's around here, right?
That's correct.
Correct. It's just in this thing, a tree.
Just to, it's weird, laser pointer.
I know, I missed the laser pointer.
I don't know.
I'm in TV, I don't like that.
If I can, if I can add, ask in addition, what about? In this area right here, I recognize that technically it would be the side yard, I guess.
It's the technical backyard.
Not the backyard.
I think we determined that it's...
It's remote from the gas meter and that sort of stuff.
It is remote from the gas meter, and the other issue then becomes you still cannot put it within five feet of an openable window and you can, or door or perforation in the house, and you can kind of see that that has all of the above.
Okay, all right. All right, but is...
Put it right out in the middle of that.
Right, but my two cents would be if I was looking for a variance. I don't know if there's a safety issue involved with that or just a noise issue. But if it wasn't a safety issue, my preference would be the, if that was, if that was a request for variance, that's the one that I would rather see.
The 50, the five feet is part of the Michigan mechanical code and electrical code. So you can't, the mechanical inspector can't approve it if it's...
Okay, got it.
No, we're not, not considering any exemptions from the technical requirements on the code. Only spatial.
Okay, then that's been explained. I got it.
Anything, Dan?
Oh, yeah. I think the fact that you and your client engaged in self-help is quite relevant. I think it's egregious. I have no doubt about Hank's credibility, and when I hear him say that he had several conversations and made several representations that you had to go to the zoning Board of Appeals first, I believe him. And I'm just letting you know that these are discretionary, and when we decide whether, how to apply them, we have discretion, and that is not something that in my mind is irrelevant. You have to be objective and reasonable, we're exercising your discretion, but the fact that you and your client engaged in self-help like this is, in my mind, and I've been on these board and panels for years, 10 years plus, unprecedented. Here, now Hank.
Yes.
I have a question. Theoretically, if we were to deny the appeal, what would be the result?
We would order it out.
Okay. Let me ask you this next question. I'm not, I don't believe that someone should be, under normal circumstances, denied the right to have a generator or the opportunity to have a generator in this day and age. In your opinion, is there a location in the backyard where a generator could go?
The real backyard or the statutory backyard?
I'll say either. I don't believe that there's a place that can satisfy all the criteria and setbacks in either location. And truth be told, I believe that where they did put it is probably, if I were sitting over there, is probably where I would have come to ask for it.
I just wanted to hear you say that you don't think there is a location that, where it could have gone.
Yeah, and I didn't measure everything to window, but I mean realistically, we have a rear yard setback.
So this reminds me of another situation on the planning commission several years ago where a homeowner raised an old historic home, in so doing misled his neighbors, and the planning commission at that point was prevented from considering that as apparently we might be prevented from considering the self-help because what we're looking at right here leads to one conclusion if you're applying these criteria. But that, in my mind, does not in any way excuse what we have heard tonight. And I think that there should be meaningful and rigorous application of the codes and the permitting process requirements because there apparently was not an exercise, at least a clean communication from them to you, but also, as I heard it, good faith. I'm not saying anyone acted in bad faith, but when you say that you had several conversations and you told them to go to the zoning Board of Appeals first and they didn't, and we're here with a fait accompli, never been my experience that we've dealt with this before, but other than that one situation, which is on Pembroke, I believe, it's close to unprecedented or unprecedented. I'm going to vote for it because I think we have to apply the ordinances as written, but I leave here very disconcerted by what I've heard tonight.
Okay.
Okay, let's open the floor to public comment. Anyone wants to weigh in? Hearing none, we will close public comment and can entertain a motion based on what we've heard and discussed so far. Hank?
Mr. Chair, just want to put one thing out there on the record that I have never, to the best of my knowledge or recollection, have had any conversation that Kent Silver was a part of this prior to that. So my understanding is that he was told that this was okay. I've not had direct conversation with Kent Silver regarding this other than he had to go here. So I just want to put that out there that I'm not...
That's good to hear.
Yeah, I'm not convinced that Mr. Silver was involved in the events that got us here.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for saying that.
Okay, all right. And we've satisfied all the golf or non-golf parts of the ordinance? Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion. Move to grant the appeal from EZ Electric and Gary Rule on behalf of the Silver family at 8165 Hendry as the irregular configuration of the building on the lot and the architectural designs in proximity of the house to neighbors make strict compliance difficult, subject to obtaining a valid mechanical, electrical and building permit and all prescribed inspections.
Second.
All right, we have second. Any, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Get your permits and have a good evening.
The only thing I have was Gary had asked me, like I said, to get this signed that it was okay to leave a generator there. Does that have to wait, does that go through heat?
That goes through.
Okay, you got it. All right. We have exhausted our.
Yeah, no clue.
Jurisdictional.
Yeah, that too.
No idea.
Finish each other's things. All right, thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Now we can pause briefly if there's other business.
Mr. Chair, I do anticipate having a dissent.
All right. And then general public participation. Come on up. Come on down.
I don't know if in your spare time between meetings you watch the commission meetings.
Well, let's just have your name and address one more time just for the minutes.
12727 South. So anyway, I don't know if you watched the other meetings, but I wanted to bring to your attention that Brad Brickell, the Noick and Proust City Engineer, has made two presentations regarding backyard stormwater. And he is proposing beyond French drains, the possibility of breaking 30.63, which is prohibited connections. So he's suggesting that houses may be able to connect directly to the city sewer to drain their backyard or run drainage around and connect to the, what do you call it, outlet drain. And actually, a couple of years ago, when I, and I could show you guys some pictures of how absurdly my backyard was flooded when a neighbor put in a new driveway, Brad actually proved that I was getting water from three houses around me. And he wrote me a letter and as a courtesy, he was suggesting that I do this rear yard drainage and dig up both sides of the boulevard and connect. And I had no idea at that time that that would have been a violation of 30.63 prohibited connections. And so I'm encouraging you, because I'm guessing maybe changing the code would have to come before you, that you look.
No.
Okay, well.
It does not come before us.
Then it'd be administrative decision. But I'm encouraging you to please look over this handout that we gave you because if we start doing that prohibited connections, I was impressed Commissioner Steinhardt brought up, you know, can everybody connect to the sewer? And he was, oh, no, you know, within a certain region, only some could connect. So then who gets to connect?
Mr. Chair, I don't think this is relevant to anything that we have anything to do with.
All right, well, we.
It may be an important issue, but it is not anything that the zoning board deals with.
Well, I don't know, but maybe you need to find out.
Well, thank you for, we have it, we have it on record. We have your handout and I think that we'll take it.
But I do think the master plan falls.
Thank you for your time and presence here this evening. Unless there is any other public participation, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, 8:47.